Can I get a motion that the closed meeting be closed and the board certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in motion concerning the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Bailey, a second from Mr. Palmer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt? I meant to say, Mr. Ritchie, I'm sorry, but yes. As we stand tonight and do our pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, I would like to take this time to remember Gary Seifers, who was our CTE coordinator, our past CTE coordinator, he lost his sister today to cancer, and so as we go into our moment of silence, I would like to remember her, our division to remember her in his time of loss. So if you'll stand with me, please, we'll say our pledge first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Nichols, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt. Tonight is the night of our February board meeting, and February is Black History Month, which we always like to recognize. Last year, we started a tradition of recognizing an exemplary black educator from Mecklenburg County who has made large contributions. We would like to continue that tradition tonight, and Mr. Honeycutt, I believe you and Ms. Smith are going to be doing that.
Yes. Ms. Smith, if I could get you to join me down at the podium, please.
I'm going to ask if there are any relatives here, Mrs. Cordelia Knox Powell, if you'd all be joining us, please.
I'm going to have you come right here, please. Alright, so I'd like to read this. "We are pleased to recognize Mrs. Cordelia Knox Powell during this month of February, Black History Month, for her many years of public service in our Mecklenburg County Public Schools, and for her energetic and dedicated years of service in the area of food services for the state of Virginia. Mrs. Powell taught home economics in Mecklenburg County from 1942 until 1958. In 1958, she was promoted to Assistant State Supervisor of School Food Services in the southeastern district of Virginia, and was in charge of 260 schools in that district. She served in this capacity until her retirement. Mrs. Powell was the first black female to serve on the Mecklenburg County School Board for District Two. On December 16, 2002, the school board presented Mrs. Powell with a plaque for her 40 years of service. Mrs. Powell, at this wonderful age of 98, still resides in her home in Boyton, and we thank you for coming out, and we salute what your grandmother did for our school division, and we say thank you very much."
On behalf of our school board, we would like to present you with this plaque. It says, "Mecklenburg County Public Schools recognizes Cordelia R. K. Powell," I'm sorry, "in appreciation for your dedicated service as a school board member, and for your outstanding achievements in the community. Awarded this day, February 18, 2020, in honor of Black History Month." And I must say, it was an honor to have been here when Mrs. Powell was in charge of the cafeterias. So we go back a long way.
And I'm going to ask that you stay, during our recognitions, all the board members will be able to come by, and also, I have a question to ask.
And as you all are coming up to your seats, I will ask Dr. Scales if he would come up and introduce our seniors of the month.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Vice Chairman, and school board members, and Mr. Nichols. Tonight, I would like to go ahead and do the students of the month. First, I want to start with the Bluestone High School senior, which is Kawon DeVore Bullock. Can you come up at this time, Kawon? And also, I'm going to bring up the Parkview student senior of the month, which is Bethany First, I'm going to read about Kawon. Kawon, again, is the student of the month, I mean, the senior of the month for Bluestone High School. He is the son of Krista Bullock, who resides in Chase City, Virginia. He has eight siblings, and he is a kind, caring, responsible young man, and also very energetic, and has a great beaming personality. Kawon excels academically, is on pace to obtain his advanced diploma in May. Kawon is a well-rounded individual, and is a student who treats everyone with respect. He truly is an outstanding student. Kawon likes to cook, write stories, and help others. His caring attitude exemplifies each Christmas when he helps out with the Toys for Tod campaign in our area. Kawon works at the Pizza Hut in South Hill, and participates in various clubs at Parkview, correction, at Bluestone High School. He's president of the FCC LA, which is the culinary arts class, and is a member of the forensic club, Beta Club, and Baron's Minds Matter. After graduation, Kawon wants to help out in the school system with children. He's considering going into guidance and counseling by going to Virginia Commonwealth University, and hope to also, in the future, work at group homes, and he also wants to major in social work. So congratulations, Kawon, for your exemplary service to Bluestone High School. Next, for Bethany. Bethany Paige Walton is the senior of the month for Parkview High School. She's the daughter of Mr. and Mrs. David and Holly Walton. Bethany is a model student who strives in academics and extracurricular activities. She's a leader within the school, participating in the SGA and Beta Club. She makes sure that everyone understands what is going on throughout the building, and helps them, helps everybody through the clubs with their collective goals. Her classmates look up to Bethany. She goes above and beyond to assist them. If they don't understand, she's willing to explain it further to them. She's willing to listen to her peers. She is kind, compassionate, and speaks to others in the hallway. That's some very good, some very good attributes, very good. Upon graduation, she plans to go into, get a degree in biology or chemistry, and she seeks to become a pharmacist in the future. Actually, she's been accepted to Campbell University, where she might be going into their school of pharmacy, hopefully, in the future. So congratulations, Bethany, for your outstanding work at Parkview High School. Parents can come up and take photos, if you'd like.
And I have the privilege of doing the next awards, so I'll go to the podium. February is also Virginia School Boards Association School Board Appreciation Month, and as we work very closely with the School Boards Association, we have specific certificates of recognition for each of you to express the appreciation of the community and the schools for the work that you do all the time. We also like to take this moment to acknowledge the principals and the work that they did tonight, to have dinner and enjoy the dinner for everybody together. I want to give these certifications out to each of you as a way of saying thank you, and as we come to the end of it, ask the audience if they would express their appreciation with me for the work that you're doing, so... Ms. Garner? Ms. Smith? Mr. Ritchie? Mr. Palmer?
Thank you.
Mr. Edwards? Right here. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you.
Ms. Van?
Thank you.
Mr. Allgood?
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Honeycutt.
They know we're going to be talking about the budget, aren't they?
Y'all be good now.
That's a first, in four years, and that looked really good. Thank you. It doesn't go unnoticed, I assure you.
Well said, on this night when we're talking about the budget for next year. This week is also the week of National School Board Clerk Appreciation Month. And so tonight, I have a specific certificate of recognition to Ms. Paula Giammario, our beloved clerk. By virtue of the authority vested by the Constitution of Virginia and the Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, whereas the school board clerks in each locality throughout the Commonwealth are appointed to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the local school board, a record of all receipts and disbursements, and a record of all official acts, and whereas school board clerks perform other duties in connection with the school business of his or her locality, as may be required by the school board, and whereas school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media, on behalf of the school board and superintendent, and whereas school board clerks in the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings, and whereas school board clerks ensure that students achieve to their highest potential and provide an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents, we recognize Ms. Giammario tonight for the outstanding job that she has done. There is one more special school board appreciation award tonight. We had a large, a large groundbreaking ceremony that was historic in the Commonwealth of Virginia. In honor of that, I had this mount made for the shovel and the special program that he put together that we will place on that wall. Thank you for the work that you all have done to help make this a memorial for all of us. And if I can, Mr. Allgood, you can help me put this up.
Absolutely.
It's real gold.
It's already got a hump there.
And at this time, I'm going to ask our students of the month to come back up front here, please, along, so that the board members can recognize you.
Granddaughter, Ms. Powell.
Yes, and the granddaughter, please, of Ms. Powell, please, up front.
For tonight, we'll move on, if you will, to the superintendent's report. Okay. First, tonight, we have a health insurance update from Ms. Lexi Forrest with the Pierce Group. I'm going to ask if she comes up. You know, each year, we have an update on how our last year's insurance, our health records went, and she's got that information to share with us tonight before I talk with you about the overall impact on next year's budget.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for the warm welcome. Good evening. Like Mr. Nichols mentioned, I am Lexi Forrest, here from Pierce Group Benefits, and this evening, I would just like to review a little bit of the utilization from the 2018-2019 plan year, and what that is. That's July 2018 through June 2019. Perfect. Alright, so this first slide here shows the total membership numbers for each year. Just a reminder, subscribers are actual employees, and members includes the dependents that are enrolled as well. We also like to track average age. Generally speaking, the younger the age, the less claims are incurred. So there was a slight increase in average age for members and subscribers. However, overall, the demographics did remain pretty stable. Alright, so this slide here takes a look at the cost of service by the type or location of where services are being rendered. Again, just a reminder, inpatient is just kind of like what it sounds like. These are the services that were incurred while overnight in hospital, which is also most costly to the plan. Outpatient refers to any services rendered in an outpatient setting, such as x-rays labs, MRIs, surgery, as well as chemotherapy. Professionals, the physician charges, this can be for primary care or specialists, and this is your least costly to the plan. So the green here represents the 2018-2019 plan year. Unfortunately, in the 2018-2019 plan year, there was a significant increase in inpatient claims, a total increase of about 688,000. There was a slight decrease in outpatient, a total of about 102,000. This most likely contributed to some of the professional claim costs that did increase, showing that more members sought services in a professional setting rather than that outpatient saving, which does save the plan money. I do want to talk a little bit about the overall best practice for inpatient, outpatient, and professional. Inpatient, typically, we like to see claim costs be about 25% of the plan. Right now, Mecklenburg School Division is running about 42%. So we do want to see that decrease. Outpatient best practice is typically around 30 to 35%. Right now, you all are at 31%, so that's looking great. However, we do want to improve the professional. Typically, we want that to be about 45% of the total claim spend. Right now, you're at 27%. So, of course, you know, least costly, professional, most costly outpatient. You know, it's kind of hard to shift that outpatient to the professional, because if you're in, excuse me, inpatient to the professional, because if you're an inpatient, you need to be there. So we're going to talk about some things that we can do to hopefully increase member awareness, as well as professional. So this next slide here shows the overall percent change in the total paid claims from the 2017-2018 plan year to the 2018-2019 plan year. There was an increase of about 21% in total paid claims. This increase is due to the increase in that inpatient utilization that we saw just previously. Alright, so this slide shows the paid claims distribution, broken out by the paid amount range, as well as the unique claimants. You can see here that about 65% of the members did not hit $999 in claims. These members in the 65 percentage could potentially benefit from being on the high deductible health plan that is offered with the division, at no cost to employee only. So rather than spending about $1,500 each year on the key advantage 1,000 employee only, those members could have put those premium dollars in a health savings account, and could have saved $500 remaining. So we would like to see more members, or, excuse me, employees shift over to that high deductible health plan this year, and we'll continue the education behind that, because it can be scary. So we want to continue to educate. But I will say, right now, there's 87 employees on the high deductible health plan. So compared to other divisions that I do work with, you all are shining with the amount of members on the high deductible health plan. But of course, we always want to, want to increase that. So hopefully, we can get some talk in between the employees, saying, you know, the experiences that they have, they have had, so... Alright, so this next slide here just shows the top health conditions by paid amount. So circulatory, these are your heart-related conditions, hypertensive disease, musculus score, musculus cordell, goodness gracious, musculatory system. Those are your bones, joints, ligaments, muscles, and tendons. Ill-defined conditions, this is something that's non-specific or non-diagnosable. And then your health status, these are circumstances where, other than a disease or injury, exist, but is not classifiable to the ICD nine or 10 categories. This can be such as an exam or vaccination. Then your digestive system, that can be related to Crohn's, colitis. And so these top health conditions represent about 63.5% of the total claim spend. Alright, so emergency room visits. So I just want to refresh your memory, ambulatory visits, that means that it did not result in an admission or involve surgery. Avoidable visits, those are diagnoses that could be treated in an alternative setting, such as primary care, urgent care. We can see that unfortunately, there was a slightly higher utilization in the 2018-2019 plan year. Almost 46% of the visits in the 2018-2019 plan year are classified as avoidable, meaning they could have been treated in a lower-cost setting, which could have saved the plan roughly $47,000. Also listed here are the top five diagnoses that represent 17.6 of the avoidable. When it comes to emergency room visits in this division, or, excuse me, in this county, unfortunately, there are not many options when it comes to trying to encourage employees to seek services elsewhere. The closest urgent care is actually in South Boston. So typically, what we like to do to decrease the utilization of emergency room visits is encourage employees and members to go to an urgent care facility. It's less costly, they've got extended hours than your primary care physician. We also want to make sure that your employees are establishing a relationship with their primary care provider. Another option that we have is actually what's called Live Help Online. So we do education on that. That's where you can download a program, an app, and see a doctor 24/7. The issue with that, that I learned, is almost 50% of your county does not have access to internet at home.
That's correct.
So, really, with these emergency room visits, unfortunately, it's kind of a bear that we're not going to be able to beat. We're going to continue to try, we're going to promote Live Help Online, and also, you know, remind employees the importance of urgent cares if you are traveling out of town, or you do have access to Live Help Online. So hopefully, these numbers will decrease next year. We're going to continue There we go. Perfect. So talking a little bit more about consumer education. So, primary care and urgent care, we kind of covered that. Just wanting to make sure we've got relationships with your physician, as well as utilizing urgent cares on possible, Live Help Online. Also, we have what's called a 24/7 nurse line and health library. I like to say, so whenever you're at the doctor, you maybe spend 10 minutes or so with them. You go home, your brain's, you know, kind of pondering, "Well, I have this question, I have that question." This is a good resource to get those questions asked, rather than sitting on Google. So we want to make sure that your employees are aware of this program and are actually using it. So instead of, you know, wondering, this is definitely a great tool. You do have to have internet access, but it's not something that you have to download an app and use. Alright. So wellness programs. So condition care, this is for members who may be dealing with conditions such as asthma, diabetes. Members may receive a call from condition care if their claims are indicating that they may be dealing with one of these conditions. We want to help employees understand that those nurses that are doing the outreach are there to help. We also have another program for the Quit for Live Tobacco Cessation. So this is for tobacco users that may be interested in getting more information on quit tobacco, quitting tobacco use. Then also, a wonderful EAP program that includes up to four sessions at no cost. Last but not least, there is a Future Moms Program. Once a member is enrolled, they receive a prenatal kit, including a book of full information of what to expect of the next nine months. So we will continue to promote these in the future at open enrollment and in-between. So that is what I have to share with you all this evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here, and if you all don't have any questions, I am, I'm good.
Before the questions, I just wanted to point out that we selected the Pierce Group as the company that would be handling our health insurance. They're not our health insurance agent, but they work with us, and the reason that we selected them is because of the fine job that they have done in working directly with our employees on these education issues, to try to help them find the best policies to fit their needs, and then with education, such as the wellness programs, to take care of issues before they come up. So we feel like they've done a fine job with that, and we appreciate that very much.
Absolutely. We appreciate being a part of this wonderful division, absolutely.
And I also wanted to remind the board members and the public that our insurance is carried through the program in the state that has pulled several school divisions together.
Yes.
So we're not alone in ours. That's each, in Virginia, teachers and educators are not allowed to be on the state health plan, they're in state retirement, but not in state health. We have to sort of fend for ourselves as individual localities, and we are a part of the local choice, which is the program that has put most of the school divisions together, which is very helpful when we're having increases like we've seen tonight.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. So you're in a pool with others, for sure. Right now, one of the most increasing costs in health care is pharmacy, and so being in a pool with other divisions, that it's definitely a great place to be, definitely.
Mr. Ritchie, you had a question?
I'm not that familiar with this online stuff. Is that more cost-effective than urgent care? Do you encourage people to do the Live Help Online in lieu of urgent care?
Absolutely. So Live Help Online is the same co-pay as your primary care physician. Yes, absolutely.
And I do have a question. You said educating. How are you making our members that are a part of this, or our staff that's a part of this, how do you keep them informed of what's going on, as far as, you know, calling in, or doing this, and the other? I'm just, I'm thinking that maybe a lot of them don't know that that's available.
Yes, so absolutely. So during open enrollment, that is our time to shine, and to be on the school grounds. And so we spend one-on-one times with your employees to educate them on the correct health plan that we think would be suitable for them, as well as these programs. So what we do is we have a briefing for every employee to attend, and then actually have mandatory one-on-one sessions where they can sit down with the counselor as well. Throughout the year, we have information on our website, as well as in the booklet, and I am open to any sort of, really, I guess, any wellness sort of initiatives that I can push to also go throughout the county throughout the plan year.
So we had, we've been with you all now two, four years, excuse me. So, you know, again, were these programs that you're offering now, with the call-ins, those same programs are still, were available four years ago when they, when they registered.
those same programs are still, were available four years ago when they registered?
So I know for sure they were last year. I believe, so I've been with Mecklenburg for about two years now, and you all have been with the Local Choice, and these were the same programs that are available. Specifically, Live Help Online, it has been available, but it's been a little bit of a scary topic, especially to members, you know, not used to, "Well, how is this going to work? Am I going to get prescriptions?", things like that. So we've been promoting that more, so here recently, just because it's beginning to get a lot more traction.
Okay. Mrs. Bailey?
So the Live Help Online is basically telemedicine, correct?
Yes, it is telemedicine, absolutely.
And so you're talking with a physician, or a nurse practitioner, or some healthcare provider on the other line, and you're describing your symptoms. Are you using a Skype, can they see you?
Yes. So that's the issue with the Internet.
Okay. So, all right, so they can see you, and then you pay a co-pay, I guess that's billed to your, do you give them a credit card then on the phone?
So yeah, whenever you sign up for the app, you've got to put all that information in there.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And are you limited to how many of those visits you can have?
No, ma'am.
So you don't ever have to go to a doctor if you don't want to?
Correct.
And what if they need lab work?
So lab works, right now, they are working on a program where they can actually refer you to get labs. What they will do now is refer you to your primary care physician.
Okay.
I will say they can write prescriptions, so that is, that's great. So what they can do is look for the pharmacies in your area, or you tell them, or even when you create the app, go ahead and put in your preferred pharmacy, and they will send that prescription there for you.
So that co-pay would be much less than your co-pay at the ER?
Yes, absolutely.
So, and my other question was, I lost it, but I'll remember it in a minute.
Okay. Well, again, I'm of the opinion, Mr. Nichols, and if any of the board members will share, that we probably need to revisit that with our members and with our faculty.
Absolutely.
So they do have all the updated information, that they know this, because I, just, it's my opinion that maybe a lot of them don't know, and that's why we've seen an increase in, you know, we've had these other avenues that they can travel, that they don't have to go to the ER, or, you know, whatever. So I think if we took an initiative to revisit that at some point, would be great.
I remembered my question.
Ms. Bailey?
Do you have any data that points to anyone using Live Help?
Yes. So, very good question. I came prepared with that. So during the 2018-2019 plan year, there were fourteen registrations for Live Help Online and twenty visits. So, we do have members out there using that.
And how many members do we have, again?
I believe...
Eight hundred and?
Yes, so eight hundred and sixty-seven.
Okay. Any of the board members have any other questions? Mr. Nichols?
Again, one of the reasons that we asked her to come tonight, rather than just make the health insurance cost a part of our budget, I thought it would be very important to have this as an outreach option, so that it would be in the paper, a part of the board meeting, for others to be able to see that we're attending to this, because we want to make sure that our teachers and all of our educators are healthy, and, but that they're taking the best opportunities that are out there. So, we thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Have a great evening.
And that does lead me into the presentation for where we are right now with next year's budget. We are in budget season, as you know. This is the long session for the General Assembly, and this is probably the most, the busiest General Assembly that we have known for a long time. There's a lot of issues that are out there still related to our budget that can have impact on what we will be seeing. But what I will be presenting tonight is the fiscal year 2021 operational budget, based on the current information that we have, with that input from some of the legislation that may be forthcoming. So there may be an addition, there will be an addition next month, where we modify based on that information. So with this, at our work session, I mentioned to you that our primary focus this year is on the teacher step increase. Once again, this year, we're recognizing the need in our elementary schools for alternative education and behavioral specialists, so that's once again, for the fourth year in our budget. And then, we have also heard several times about the need for increase for substitute pay for the bus drivers and for substitute teachers, which we had not had in this year's. So we'll start with projected revenue, because of course, you're going to have to make sure that you can pay for what you've got to spend money on. You can go through, you have a copy on, in your board docs, these are the fund sources of revenue for next year. I might add that it's not indicative here, but in the state funding of twenty-six million nine hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars, there is a one point four million dollar increase in state support for us from this year, which comes from several of the things the General Assembly has been doing, and we're very pleased with that. Some of that is our projections for ADM and other things, but we're pleased to have the additional funds from some of the legislator's issues that are coming. I'd also like to point out, however, that, as you saw in the work session, our composite index, which is indicative of how much the state is required to pay compared to what the locality is expected to pay for our budgetary needs, we've moved from thirty-seven percent, that is the local responsibility, to thirty-nine percent for the local responsibility. So that's, that's an increase. Again, that's higher than even just a field county, so we, that's something that we just have to live with. We, we don't have much control on that. Projected revenue, other funds is listed next. You can see the other areas that we need to deal with and we keep up with, the money from the JROTC, Medicaid dual enrollment reimbursements, tuition, rebates, and the LINK program are just some examples. There's over five hundred thousand dollars in those funds. Moving on. State funds, you can see the numbers for basic aid, sales tax, locational education, gifted education, total of twenty-six million nine hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred and thirteen. Other state items that are included in this include the at-risk four-year-olds, algebra readiness, K-three primary class size funding that we've talked about, particularly at La Crosse Elementary School, early reading interventions, and supplemental per pupil statements that we get. Projected federal revenues is on the next slide. You can see the various title programs that we have, and there are different issues for those, from professional development to enrichment opportunities for high poverty and low-performing schools, special needs, CTE with Carl Perkins, and so forth. In Fund Three of federal sources, there's the graph that goes along with that. We have still a Twenty-First Century Grant, academic improvement, several things, and you can see the breakdown. I'm going through these rather quickly, because you'll have a chance to ask questions as you look at through the month. Projected revenues for school food funds, this is an area, of course, that we've, this year, for the first time, had one hundred percent of our elementary schools doing free and reduced-price lunch. Our indications are that that's working for us this year, so we're pleased with that. That's breakfast, lunch, summer food services, and meal expansions for our students. One of the things that's new this year is additions to our debt services, or Fund Four. This actually is moving our overall budget from right around fifty million dollars to over a hundred million dollars, because we have, we have now two bonds for the new school project. The 2017 bond that we've been paying on, the 2018 bond that we are now paying on, and as you know, we approved, and the Board of Supervisors will be putting out for another bond for thirty-five million this spring. So that will add to the overall cost in the future. Looking at expenditures. Again, we've looked at the highlights for the year, we've gone through the whole process of having the board talk about your priorities, my priorities, as superintendent, having the principals, and the division directors talk about the things that they're looking at. We have had an opportunity to shift some of the principal's priorities from just individual schools to maintenance, that we're working with on the long-term maintenance plan. So as we look at that, the first thing that you're going to see on the next slide is the health benefit expenditures to 2020. It's been pretty flat for a number of years, but in the upcoming year, we are looking at a little over twelve point eight percent increase in our health insurance cost. So, we do not know, we have some discussion to be made about how that will be taken care of, but we just, we do know that we're going to have that increase to have to deal with. And these figures show, we did not have that number until late last week, and so what we put together tonight is looking at an expected increase, but not quite as high as twelve point eight percent. So that's one of the areas that we'll be having to look at, as well as determining how best to level that part out. Okay. Next slide. You can see the various categories, and I'll remind you that our budget sent to the Board of Supervisors is not approved on an overall budget, but by category. So here are our categories that they will be looking at. And you can see the projected, the last item on there is the projected increase for the healthcare, and what we have so far, we haven't got all of it, was two hundred and forty thousand dollars in the increase in the budget. So, we'll update that as we have it. According to the percent of increase, or the percent of expenditures for the various components, you will notice on the slide, with the different categories, our instructional budget takes up seventy-five percent of our overall expenditures. So it's a visual. And then our total projected expenditures for next year, what we're looking at right now is fifty-seven million seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars. Again, that's not, that's not final. We've got some more work with the General Assembly to do before we can come up with everything, but that's where we are at this point, and it's the basis of what we'll be working on. The total local contribution, according to this, is twenty-four million five hundred and fifty-one thousand fifty-four dollars. And the bottom line is, as we look at our revenues coming in from others, and what we're looking at asking for an increase from the locality, which they had understood, we had the steps in place, we're looking at a nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, five hundred and sixty-six increase right now from this year to next year, and what we'll be asking for the locality. Any questions?
Board members, do you all have any questions for Mr. Nichols about the budget? Again, I believe this is for information tonight, and...
Yes, this is certainly not our final budget.
Correct. Ms. Garner?
I have a question. We have the, sorry. We have the food, lunch, and breakfast served in the elementary schools. Is there any possibility of extending that to the middle schools or high schools?
The, having it for free for all students?
Yes.
We look at that every year. The, the big part of the issue is, we have to verify students that are on free and reduced-price lunch. When it gets to a certain percent that we can calculate safely, then we are able to offer it by federal guidelines. It increases the amount of support that we're getting from the federal government. We don't get the response from parents on the, filling out the free and reduced-price lunch applications at the middle and high school that we do from the elementary. And so, you know, if we, there's reason to expect that if it's available for elementary, it would be available at the elementary, at the middle and high. But until we start getting that data in, we can't feel safe, because if we miss it, then we have to repay money to the, to the state and federal government that we were, we didn't spend, and we might not have in our budget.
Since we have Facebook, and kids are always on Facebook, even parents are on Facebook, could we do more advertisement of getting these forms in at the beginning of the school year, to, and explain that if we could get a certain percentage, or within a certain percentage, that we could get free lunch and breakfast? Maybe they would understand better? I know elementary parents fill in, and I don't understand why only elementary, because they got kids, a lot of them have kids in middle school and high school. And I know that when I was teaching, I always told my kids, "Bring this form back", but, you know, they wouldn't, "We don't qualify." But they're always stressed bringing it back. So if we could get it back, then we might fall in?
Well, we, we might. We, I mean, that's something that we look at every year. And we do try to get that information out. I know that the schools do a lot of work to get it out, we do it on social media, but we'll, we'll try more. I don't know...
Our food service person is here this evening. Ms. Moore, would you like to come up and address the board about this as well, please? Maybe you can enlighten us on... It's good to see you this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Moore. We look at, in April, is when the figures come out, where we can start looking at projections for next year, as far as what we can and cannot do for CEP. CEP is based somewhat on the, actually, the TANF, Medicaid, and when they fill out their applications. So if parents would fill out those applications as well, if they're getting services over at Social Services, this is where some of that information comes from as well. So, right now, the state is doing what they call direct certification, where we get direct informations from Social Services now, and I have seen an increase in that, coming from the county, from the Social Services into the state, into our program. So, right now, if you, April is the projected date when we can start looking at numbers for this information.
So is it a possibility that we could move that to middle and high school for next year?
Yes, there would be a possibility to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And you'll bring back that information at that time, once you get that information?
Yes, sir. We'll run all the numbers. We'll look back and see how well the elementaries have been doing with that as well, so...
Okay. All right. Ms. Bailey has a question. Ms. Moore?
Not for Ms. Moore.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Ms. Moore, before you go back, just hold on. I know this is a budget question, but I think you're next, so you might as well stay up.
Actually, I have two questions. So this proposed budget is based on what ADM? Do we know?
Our ADM?
Thirty-nine eighteen.
Thirty-nine eighteen. And you may not know the answer to this right now.
Ms. Pepper, if you could come up to the podium, please?
If you get back to me, that'd be fine. Based on how many full-time equivalent positions? How many FTEs in that budget request, do you know?
No, I do not know. We run about seven hundred and twenty-five FTEs.
Okay. And one, one other question. Is there any way that we could get the information on how many of the positions that we're requesting are school-based versus non-school-based? What percentage?
What do you mean?
So, school-based positions would be principals, teachers, support personnel. Non-school-based would be, like, people who work here, people who work at the shop, you know, that kind of thing. I just, we've never really...
What's in this budget?
Yes.
Other than the behavior specialist, I think they're going to be based one at each elementary school?
No, I mean, our total positions that are...
You're talking about support staff?
I just want to know what percentage is school-based, and what percentage is non-school-based, of the people that are, will be included in this budget?
Okay. You mean division-wide?
Yes, ma'am.
Not new ones?
No.
Current?
No. I just want, yeah. What percentage is school-based, what percentage is non-school-based?
Okay.
Now, for one point of clarity, many of our special needs services are actually located at central office, but they're at the schools all the time. They would be...
So they're working with, they have direct contact with students? So, non-school-based would be those that are not?
Like the central office administrators?
Like a clerk, for example.
Like clerks.
Yeah, those are actually assigned to a school, so anybody assigned to a specific school, I would consider a school-based.
Okay. I'd just like that information.
Ms. Pepper, one other question. You said this current, this budget we're talking about... You said this current, this budget we're talking about is based, the ADM is ba, ADM, excuse me, is based on 39, 3918.
3918.
What is that less than this year?
It's about, I'm trying to think, 65, I think.
I'm sorry.
It's about 65 less.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Pepper.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda has to do with the wellness policy that comes to us, because we had a federal audit of our food services program a couple of weeks ago, and I want to give kudos to Ms. Moore and to her staff and all of, well, it was actually an audit at Parkview High School and at South Hill Elementary School specifically. And I was there when the auditors came in, and when they left, they were very, she was one lady, was very complimentary of the reporting that has been sent to the state by Ms. Moore, as well as the, what they observed in the schools. All of that was a very, very clean audit. The only one thing that they did ask that we attend to, which is why this is on the budget, or on the meeting for tonight and an action item, is that it appears that the School Board Association did not include some language that is required by the federal government about school board, about school lunches. And we need to make sure that that language is now voted to be included in our policy. And so, we're bringing that to you tonight and asking you to act on that tonight, because it needs to go, be reported back to them as a response, that we have taken care of that small matter. And you have the language, I believe, in your board docs. But, Ms. Moore, if you want to have any more to say about that, this is a good time to do it.
Thank you. I want to back up one second and let Ms. Garner know, and the board know, that as of today, we actually put a app on our school food site, so parents could go to my school app and fill out a household application. It's probably very important for students that are still coming into the school system now, at the middle and high school. So, they are able to go and download the app and fill out the application then, and it comes directly to us, so that's one plus right now for us to get applications in quickly. As far as the wellness policy, the language is in the fundraising, and there was two sentences that we had to add to that, and also, and the district wellness under the last part of the paragraph down, what says the district will evaluate compliance with the wellness policy no less than once every three years. I won't read. The assessment will include the extent to which each school is compliant with the policy, description of the progress made in attendance with the goal of the wellness policy, and how the policy compares to the model wellness as established by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. So, we had to add these sentences into the system, into our policy to make it up to date, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Ms. Moore, on page eight, oh, excuse me, page six, section two, celebrations and rewards, does that apply to parents who might bring in, say, birthday cupcakes?
Yes, ma'am.
And how do you suggest that each building monitor that?
Moving forward, I'm working on putting onto the website suggestions from the USDA on how to do celebrations. That may be something that has to be discussed within the schools, that the principals would have to figure out a way to get to the parents. It's probably educating the parents at parent meetings with the students, just pure education on to what we're trying to do, what the USDA is trying to do to make children healthier. We also, if they have parties within the school they like, we could, you know, offer things through the cafeteria, they could purchase as well. We're all within smart snack compliance. We can do ice cream, or, you know, cakes, or cookies, or something of that nature for them within the school, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore, I do, I'm sorry. Mr. Palmer, yes, sir?
Ms. Moore, we were talking, and Ms. Garner also directed, we were talking earlier about high school or middle school students being able to turn their forms in, for lunch, that is, as opposed to elementary. As being in the high school setting, the high school students, they almost refuse to bring those forms back. And I think some of the teachers that are here, or principals that are in the high school and middle school level can attest to, you can tell them to bring the forms in, and, and they just refuse to bring them in. I don't know whether it's embarrassment of saying, I'm bringing in a form saying I need free lunch, or whether it's just, I don't know, arrogance on their part. I'm not sure what it is, but we have that problem, and it is a difficult one to deal with. Because I used to plead with my students to bring their forms in, but they did not do it. So, it's not what it is to parents' problem, parental problem, but it also refers back to the students.
Well, I mean, this application will help with that barrier some. Nobody would really know you've done it, because it's on your phone or computer, or you could actually go to the school, pull it up, and set right there at a desk and do it, because it's on our school food site right now, so.
You know, that's what they did with the form. They used to have the little tickets that you'd go through the line, and it got to the point where students were ashamed to say that they are getting free lunch, and so then they changed and gave a number. And so, you go through and you just give the number and keep going, and that helped out as far as that. So, maybe that's the answer there.
Yes, sir.
One other question, Ms. Moore. I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. This information came from the USDA to add the language, correct?
Yes, sir.
Into our policy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And it came, the policy came to us from the School Board Association.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it's a matter that the School Board Association sent it without the language that we need to have in it, and they've taken that information back to the School Board Association. But for our purposes, we need to get it into our policy to, to meet the expectations of this evaluation.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, for your great work.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Mr. Honeycutt, I believe you might have something about the School Board Committee meeting.
Yes, sir. At our work session last Monday on February the 10th, we talked about, there was some concern about meetings, the different committees that were meeting. We felt like there was some discussion about meeting as an all-needed basis, or an, excuse me, not annual, but quarterly. So, I would like to have a little discussion, if you would acknowledge the chair, please, and I would like to hear what is the will of the board, and at that point, we will move forward on what's, what the board would like to do as far as, as committees. Mr. Ritchie, I'll start with you.
I'm certainly open to what other people might want. I thought the monthly might be a little much.
Yes, sir.
Some of the committees aren't nearly that active. So, you know, we could have it as needed, and if, if a committee doesn't meet for a year, maybe we don't need that committee anymore. Maybe that's the issue. But I'm on two committees. One, we met, Ms. Smith and I are, but actually, we're on two committees together. We met one, and the other one didn't meet, because, but I don't want to be forced to meet just to say that we met.
Okay. All right. Ms. Smith?
That's my feeling also. Not to me, just to me. I believe, and I might be incorrect, Mrs. Hodges can correct me, but the Special Ed Advisory Committee is, they have to have at least three meetings, don't they? Yeah, I thought, I remembered that. So, and we met on Tuesday, February the 11th. A very good meeting in the Central Office, and with this Hodges, and I might just say, we discussed a lot of the electives and the accommodations for students with disabilities, the Special Olympics. We discussed the importance of inclusion. We reviewed the annual plan, and we all, we also had a parent who had a birthday present, and I thought it was really, really nice that Ms. Hodges had set it up so that we celebrated his birthday.
Ms. Smith, not to cut you off, I'm sorry, because that will come up during our committee reports.
All right.
But right now, we're just discussing whether or not, what are your feelings about meeting? Do you want to meet on a quarterly basis or an as-needed basis?
As needed, I believe.
Okay.
I know we had set the meeting for the advisory, the next meeting for March the 10th.
Okay.
But that was kind of different.
Okay. Ms. Bailey?
I think each committee's different, and I think their roles are different. I, I feel like, I'm kind of like Brent, you know, if you met quarterly and there wasn't much to talk about, we may not need that committee anymore, or maybe it could be combined with something else that's related. I think at this point, it's the first of the year, all the committees should meet, whether they need to or not, in January, February, just to figure out what we're doing on the committee and what our job is, right? And then, as the year goes on, you know, depending, like, you know, we're in a new school, and my guess is, you know, the capital improvement will need to meet frequently, instruction might need to meet more frequently, athletics might need to be, meet more frequently. I think, it's, it's hard to say, really. You don't want to meet just to meet. Thank you, Brent, for saying that. But if there's work to be done, I'm assuming that someone at Central Office would say, we need to have a committee meeting.
Yes.
So, I'm really kind of looking at the superintendent to direct the as-needed ones. So, that's kind of how I feel about it.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Mr. Allgood?
I think as needed would work, and I met with the safety committee, because I was new at it, and I met with Mr. Jefferson and Ms. Dalton, and they gave me a lot of enlightenment on things they're planning on doing to make things safer in their schools as we renovate the elementary schools down the line, to fix, lack of a better word, holding tank.
Yes, sir.
If people come in, so you can better screen who's coming into your building. Again, they're pretty wide open. You come to the elementary school, they'll let anybody through school, they let me in all the time. So, you know, they need to do a better job of that. No, I'm kidding. But it's, I saw a lot of things, especially the new school, that are going to really help with safety. So, I don't think we need to meet on a monthly basis.
Mr. Campbell?
I'm not going to waste your time and restate everything that's been said.
Mr. Pa, okay. Mr. Palmer?
I agree. We can live with that.
Okay. All right. Ms. Garner?
Well, with the people from the Central Office knowing who, what committee they're on, I think be as needed, and Mr. Nichols will know if we, if we need to have a safety committee, he can go to that person and say, why don't you meet, y'all need to discuss this? So, I'd say as needed.
So, I believe the consensus of our board, the majority of our board has spoken and said that we needed to do it as an as-need basis. And, Mr. Nichols, I guess the board is directing you to, as these committees need to meet moving forward, especially with our new school buildings, that you will take appropriate steps to reach out to these committees, to make sure that they're meeting, and obtaining whatever information that needs to come back to the board.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And speaking of that-
I just have one little thing to add about that.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Bailey?
As the committees meet, we were asked to give a report of our meeting, and I, I wondered if it would be possible for our school board clerk to sit in on these committee meetings, and have the clerk take those notes, and provide them on board docs for us for the next time.
I-
Can I say something?
All right. Hang on just one second. Yes, sir. Mr. Campbell has the floor.
We're paying her to be the executive secretary.
Well, she's, we-
You see what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
And these meetings are mostly during the day. So, how can she-
Not at Central Office.
How can she double-dip as being the executive secretary from nine to five, and be at a committee meeting at three o'clock in the afternoon? Because something's not going to get done in five hours.
You know, I would, I would concur with Mr. Campbell again. Mrs. Giomara was very busy, and I believe that those committee members, whoever they might be, you know, could take some notes and bring them, because I think Mrs. Smith, you got a report tonight, I believe, Ms. Smith's got a report. So, I just, you know, I wouldn't want to burden our school board clerk, and also executive secretary to the superintendent, with that. That's my opinion. If anybody else, Mr. Ritchie?
Do you, but the notes that they take, do you want them on board docs, or do you want us to bring hard copies to pass?
You know, again, we can, I will get in touch with you moving forward before each meeting, and I will ask those committee persons if you all have a report, and if there's a report to be made from that committee, we'll put it on our board docs. But other than that, it won't show up, it won't appear, if that's okay, if that's the will of the board.
One thing, we have a work session.
Correct.
So, if they bring the reports to the work session, they can report then, and pick out the highlights of that, so it wouldn't be a long session, and have a hard copy to go along with it.
Okay.
That's what I would say.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Mr. Nichols?
Yes. Before we get to committee reports, because we have had several committee reports, committees meet since then, there are a couple of comments since our last meeting. One is, I'd like to point out that our bill in the legislature has been now put in with the bills for the same information, or for the same request from Goochland and Charlotte County, and there's another one I know of. And they will be meeting in the Appropriations Committee in the Senate tomorrow, considering all of them together at nine o'clock. They are not asking for any representation from the schools for this meeting. I think it's going to probably be a done deal that they will go through, because they all made it through both the House and the Senate, each one. So, putting them together, I think this is just looking at what the impact would be on the budget for the final budget. But that's going to be tomorrow morning at nine o'clock in the General Assembly. And as we learn more, I'll certainly keep you updated. I'd also like to point out that we have a Governor's School Board meeting tomorrow at four o'clock. I don't know if you want to say anything about that, Ms. Garner?
The only thing I have to say is, Governor's School will be going through an evaluation in a couple of months, and usually, they will contact some parents to meet with them. I know that I, I've got to be there, I'm not sure whether Mr. Nichols does. They have questions, they will talk to us, but they also feed us while we're there.
I believe it's a couple of weeks, not a couple, isn't it the first week of March?
Is it only a couple of weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
And all the superintendents are asked to come together for the questions that they would have.
The parents were invited, but it's in the middle of the day, so I don't know.
Yeah. It'll be at night, all right?
Yes.
Okay.
And now, as far as committee reports are concerned, Mr. Edwards is, is not here for the Joint Education Capital Improvement Committee report. But I will let you know, and actually let you see if we can pull it up. I think we have slides. We do have action going on the Hill. They have put a fence up. Do we have that slide? The ones for the, the ones that Brian sent? They're working on that. That's supposed to, on the way. Brooke, I can just talk about it if- Okay. Basically, we've got a scenario where we will be getting monthly reports now. I didn't feel like we had enough activity going on to ask SCANSCA to come, but we have a gate up. If you want to go in and visit, you will need a hard hat, which you've been given. We have them here, if you don't have yours. We have to have a safety vest, you have to have safety goggles, and you have to go through a, a test at the site before you, on safety regulations to be able to go in. So, it's, it's a lot to it. The, the Cleveland Construction Company has actually purchased the Civic Building at the beginning of the road. That is now their headquarters, so you can go in there and check in, should you ever want to do that. They have brought a significant amount of material to the site, that is, the heavy equipment that's going to be moving dirt, and they are actually felling trees at this point. So, we are making some, some very good progress. I can also tell you, in this short amount of time, we've had an initial meeting with the subcontractors that are working on the program. We had that meeting here at Central Office with Ballou Justice Upton and SCANSCA, and SCANSCA is on the ball. We have already seen where their work with us has saved us a significant amount of money on the long term. So, we feel very good about what we're doing and working with SCANSCA. So, that's a report that we have right now for the Capital Improvement Committee, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
So, we didn't sell the timber?
No. We did not sell the timber. The timber is part of the, the bidding process. All right. Finance Committee, I don't know if the Finance Committee wants to make a recommendation.
The Finance- The finance committee met this afternoon, and we are recommending that we pay the bills this month.
Anything else?
That's all.
That's all. Okay. Uh, school safety committee, Mr. Allgood, do you have anything you wanted to share from that? You said earlier, it might be all yet.
The other that I met with, Mr. Dalton and, uh, and, uh...
Mr. Allgood, if you'll just make sure your microphone is turned on, please, because we are work- there you go.
Uh, other than, you know, I, I met with Mr. Dalton, Mr. Jefferson. They showed me some grants they're working on. I don't have anything in writing, but they had grants they're working on and some ideas for some safety things I mentioned earlier. And, uh, they seem to be on the ball, working hard to make things a lot safer for our students. So I was very impressed with the work they've done. And we plan on meeting again sometime down the line.
Thank you. CTE committee?
Our CTE committee met on Wednesday, February the 12th, at 10:00 a.m. in the Parkview Senior Library. And, uh, each of you has a report in front of you, so I'll just try to touch on some of the most important things. Uh, we're using the Hampton City Schools' approach where students see themselves as a part of a smaller school environment. And, uh, in our meeting, um, Mr. Nichols explained the six career academies. And you all might want to know those. The first was Health and Human Services. The second, Advanced Technology. The third was STEM, which included welding, carpentry, and HVAC. The fourth, Law and Leadership. The fifth, Environmental Science, which include agricultural and catering. And the sixth, International Business and Culture. Um, I've learned a lot. I'm in the learning stage. And, um, uh, Ms. Hendricks has just done a wonderful job with what she's doing. And, um, she let us know everything is happening in the, that is happening in the county. And we're doing some wonderful things, and there are some wonderful partnerships. She mentioned that, uh, Chatham, um, Middle School was a good example that we could go and maybe observe sometimes. One other important thing, Farm Bureau had contributed, committed $50,000, and I thought that was good. Um, most of the other things, I think, um, I don't need to mention. Oh, I did like the part that real money in the real world, the reality store will be taught, too. And our students need these. I've heard many parents speak about wanting their children to, to be, to, to participate in things that they will be involved in in the real world. And, uh, students will learn how to buy or rent a house, for instance. And, uh, they'll make payments and balance checkbooks, write resumes, and do just real-life things. Um, buy food, cook, keep house. And, um, each CT, pro- CTE program was identified with the academies. And I think I'll just stop there. But it was an excellent meeting. And may I mention that we observed the exploit Parkview, and I got a lot of brochures. The students had the exhibits, and they were just explaining everything. And it was just, it was so interesting and exciting. I got to see the robot at work and the farming, the things. They were, they said we had a turkey now. I was, I hadn't heard of, I mentioned the cow, but I hadn't heard about the turkey. Is that Blue Stone?
I'm, I'm guessing it's new to me.
I took a picture of it. I was taking pictures of everything, so if any of you're interested in watching.
I had nothing to do with the turkey.
I could, uh, show you on my, um...
You are wearing a t-shirt.
But it was an exciting meeting, really. There's so much to learn, and I'm sure. I just hope parents participate and learn everything that's going on in our county, because I was not aware of all the things that are going on. And so it blew my mind, some of the things they were doing.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, the athletics committee also met, and I think there, uh, there's a report there for you to see. I don't know if anybody wants, either Ms. Bailey or Ms. Garner want to add anything to that.
Actually, Mr. Palmer and I are on the athletics committee, and there's a report attached to your board docs. If you have any questions, ask Mr. Nichols.
Well, one thing that, uh, has come up, I just want to bring to the attention of the board in the session, we've mentioned it in the work session. Um, the athletic directors have requested in that athletic committee that we consider, um, maybe changing what we have been, the procedure that we've been following for, uh, tickets for employees. Uh, it's been a little bit complicated to have, uh, each of the employees bring all their family and identify who their families are. And we may want to be looking at having the, uh, employees plus one as opposed to the other. So we'll be considering that and bringing it to the committee. And then the instructional committee, uh, also, we had a very good conversation about the instruction. And because of the innovation grant that we have, we have asked as a part of the instructional committee present to nation tonight to have representatives from Blue Stone and Parkview talk about the items in the innovation committee. So, uh, I think we'll have Blue Stone go first. It's on.
There. Good evening. I'm Crystal Patton. I'm co-chair for the innovation committee at Blue Stone High School. Uh, thank you all for having us this evening. We are very excited about the opportunity in serving our students, uh, with relevant, applicable experiences. Blue Stone High School is working with five other schools to bring the innovation grant to life. We are currently in the planning phase with implementation next school year. Our goal is to enable our students to have clarity about their future goals through meaningful advisory experiences, internships, and apprenticeships, and integrating multiple content areas and knowledge with practical application. In order to achieve this goal, we have meaningful objectives. Develop interdisciplinary courses. Develop a meaningful student advisory system. Foster the development of internships and apprenticeships to benefit students and employers. And to develop a network improvement community with high school partners. Mr. Seismore will now talk about the interdisciplinary courses.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, ma'am.
I will be talking about the interdisciplinary courses that we will be offering at Blue Stone High School and plan to implement at, uh, at Blue Stone High School, uh, next year. Uh, first, we have the Biology I and Psychology. Uh, we will be focusing on real-world events, research design, and critical thinking. Uh, also, we plan to strongly, uh, work on having a English and photojournalism blended class, where communication, collaboration, and creativity will also be used or be focused, uh, in those classes. Uh, content and competencies reinforced through multiple disciplines. Uh, Student Survey and Administration, uh, was administered in November. And strong teacher interest and soliciting in November also were used to determine how we would find these courses, uh, to, uh, provide for the students at Blue Stone High School. Uh, these will be year-long courses, uh, one single block, and they will be earned, they will earn two high school credits, and prerequisites will also be put into place as well in selecting, uh, of these courses. Uh, there's also an advisory component as well. Uh, this advisory component will be 25 minutes per day, five days per week. Uh, this was also determined by our faculty at Blue Stone High School with an overwhelming response. Uh, we'll have a mindful Monday and Tuesday talk, where topics of academics, behavior, social emo- social, emotional, and post-secondary planning, and work readiness will also be discussed. And, um, also a barren block, where we target remediation and intervention based on data sources, as well as a, uh, purpose of having enrichment. Uh, our work-based experiences, uh, in-house opportunities, guest speakers. Uh, we will have a BHS leadership class, uh, tele-option, uh, telework options, where students will have the opportunity to work, uh, via the internet, or do, uh, uh, work placement via the internet with other organizations or corporations outside of our localities. And also cooperation from the Clarksville Chamber of Commerce and Chase City Chamber of Commerce.
And to add to, uh, the internship piece, uh, with the, um, chambers, we have been in contact with both of those at, uh, Clarksville and Chase City. Uh, and they have sent out to their chamber men- members. Some of you may have seen that, uh, come through email and through, um, their Weekender updates. Um, but there is a Google form for interest, and so that's also on our Facebook page and our website, uh, for those interested parties, um, to let us know that they would love to work with our students to provide those work readiness skills, and again, just making that education, uh, more relevant. Um, and so, um, in addition to the telework idea, uh, we know that, that, that things are changing, uh, the workplace is changing. And so, again, just giving those students that opportunity, um, just a vast majority of opportunities there. And so the final piece, um, sorry, is, uh, the NIC. Um, and so that is us working with those other schools, uh, the network improvement community. And so we are working, um, in collaboration with Charles City High, Halifax County, Highland Springs, JR Tucker, and then also Parkview High School. And we have been able, um, to tour Halifax and to see how they are implementing this grant. And, um, so we are working in a collaborative structure. Uh, we'll be able to share ideas, address common, uh, challenges to student success, develop knowledge, uh, around improvement practices, and cultivate and accelerate innovation.
So with that being minded, I also would like to, uh, to add that, uh, myself and a couple of the teachers from Blue Stone High School will be attending JR Tucker High School next week, where we'll be developing curriculum with those blended classes in the, in the biology, in the, in the, uh, psychology as well. So we're very much in, uh, the process of planning. Uh, the teachers are very much, uh, looking forward to, uh, this new initiative, and we're very optimistic in, 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 in the promises that, uh, this is going to, uh, to bring to our children. So we're very much looking forward to it. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, we're hoping that our children will be ready and, uh, become the phoenixes that they, uh, aspire to be in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. And Parkview?
Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Camisha Thomas, and I am on the Innovation Committee for Parkview High School. I am on the part that is doing the interdisciplinary courses, and I will be teaching our new interdisciplinary course next, um, semester. And what better way to introduce this course to you is with one of the sample products that we're hoping to bring out of this course. And that... ...is an overview of visual storytellers. That is a combination of English 12 and photojournalism. Um, the prerequisites for our course is you have to have passed English 11 and their SOLs and have at least one year of photojournalism. and have at least one year of photojournalism experience. Like I said, that is just a sample of what we're trying to produce with this class. Ms. Coachlin and I are very excited. We can't wait to get started. We're just popping ideas off of each other. One that we're very excited about is our living yearbook. Our plan is to have our students research every graduating class of Parkview and pick something to put into our living yearbook. So at the end, when we move into our new school, we'll have something that the alumni can come back and look at. Some other information as far as our course is concerned, it's a year-long class. You will get two credits, English and photojournalism, which is an elective class. It is going to be on an A/B schedule. The students must, again, must have passed English 11 and taken at least one year of photojournalism. We're looking at class sizes anywhere from a minimum of 20 students between the two of us up to 40. As far as equipment is concerned, we do have some audiovisual equipment at our school. We're going to take some time to look through it and see what we need to replace and what we can continue to use. As far as space, you know, Parkview is busting at the same, so we're going to be looking for some space where we can start our broadcasting station. And then, the video that I did, I got that information from Crystal Amore. She showed me this program, which is totally online. There's no software to download. Played around with it about, I'd say, four or five days, and I was able to produce that in just four or five days of playing around with it. And it costs us about $4.19 a year. It gives us up to 35 licenses. So that's a license per student, per staff as well. And it has all kinds of information and music and graphics, pictures and things that they can use with the program. They get five gigabytes of storage space that they can take with them. So whatever they create with us, they can take to post-secondary education if they like. Also, there's music and other things that we can do with it. And with this program, Ms. Coachlin and I both are looking forward to working with the community and having mentorships and job shadowing, especially with the newspaper and the radio station. A lot of our community, you know, work during the afternoons or in the evenings, and they get to miss out on some of the activities that we're having in our school. It is our plan to broadcast some of those events. I know one of the events we were talking about was graduation. A lot of people don't get to go to graduation due to our ticket limit. So what a wonderful thing it would be to put graduation on our YouTube channel, so people who can't come to graduation can still get to participate in it. And then, we're also, as far as the English part, we're going to still do our British Literature Review. If you came to the parent-teacher conference on Thursday, you saw Grundle meet you in the lobby. He's part of my British Literature Review. And then, I tried to get our YouTube channel up. I have it up, but somehow, in creating our YouTube channel, it changed my email name to Parkview Dragons, Parkview High, Home of the Dragons. So if you got an email from me, that's what you got. So I'm working on trying to fix that. And we are really, truly excited. We want to take the kids to a news station, let them tour that. We want to tour the Richmond Times-Dispatch because it's our understanding, a little birdie told us, that there will be a broadcasting station at the new school, and we're ready. We want to call it the Phoenix Suns News. So we're ready. We want to have a little mini news station and a newspaper for the community. And that is it. That's all I have. And I also put a flyer for our visual storytellers on each one of your stations for you to take a look at. All right? I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous because I have my former principal and my favorite teacher right there. So.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions?
Which is which?
My favorite teacher? I'll tell anybody, Ricky.
I'll give you the check later.
Hi, I'm Vicki Warriors. I'm going to talk about our other two parts of the Innovation Grant at Parkview High School. Primarily going to focus on our Advisory Committee piece, because I think that's where the big difference is between Parkview and Bluestone at the moment. Our plan is to meet with our advisory students for about 30 to 35 minutes, we're still working on the bell schedule, two days a week throughout the entire year. And we are developing curriculum that will be grade level specific. So we're going to have overarching themes for each month, but freshmen will be looking at it in a different lens than seniors would. And the idea is, these things will come back cyclically every year, but you're slowly going to increase the rigor and expectation from the students through each topic. We're really going to encourage a lot of career exploration in terms of putting things down on paper. What is your plan? How are you going to get from point A to point B? Those kinds of things. We understand the importance of remediation and enrichment, and one of the things that we really liked from our site visit with Halifax was, they kind of transitioned at the end of the semester, right before SOL testing, into that remediation and enrichment piece. And that's kind of what we would anticipate doing. Currently, we do a dragon time pull-out peer program for about five days prior to SOL testing, and we would sacrifice some of these advisory blocks in order to get that same time in with the students for that. So we want to focus on the whole child with this. We've got five main areas of focus that we want to incorporate into our advisory block. Each of these is important, a lot of overlap in between them, but we're going to really reinforce things throughout the year with each of the students. We want the students to have an opportunity to develop almost like a mentor-like relationship with one faculty member. We're envisioning running this through probably their homerooms, so you would follow those students all the way from ninth grade until they graduate, so that you're consistently working with them over their four years in high school. I'm going to talk a little bit about our goals for each of these five areas. Academics. When you talk to parents, when you talk to students, it's amazing the lack of just basic study skills. A lot of our students think that the way that you study is you read your notes, and you read your notes, and you read your notes, and that's it. So we want to make sure that we've got a variety of techniques that they can use, not only while they're in our schools, but whenever they go on to post-secondary education opportunities. We want to make sure that they are aware of the opportunities available to them through McLemberg County Public Schools as well as in the community. One of the things that we also want to really do is to increase parental awareness of what opportunities are available to our students. So we want to focus on communication with our parents as well. Focus on goal-setting with them. A lot of them have very lofty goals, but they have no idea how to get from here to being an astronaut, or being a rock star, or being a surgeon. How do you break it down into manageable chunks that we can actually help you achieve those goals long-term? And also, just access to things that we already have available in our schools and in our community. For example, the libraries. A lot of our students don't use our public libraries. We can download eBooks. How do they do that? They don't know. So we'd like to partner with the librarians in the local vicinity and ask them to come in and kind of talk to our students about how to access these resources. This is the biggie, social emotional learning. We have had a lot of issues in our schools and in our communities with students and mental health concerns. And that's something that we really feel as educators, we want to be there for our students, we want to help them. And we think this is something that we can really focus in on small groups, helping students become aware of what they're feeling, how to cope with these feelings, how can you react to different situations. Bullying prevention is a big deal. Having students understand, what you put out on social media will follow you. We want to cover these topics with our students in these advisory classes, as well as self-care. You've got to take care of yourself first before you can do anything else successfully in life. This is going to go hand-in-hand with our CTE classes and electives, but we really want students to develop plans. So we're interested in administering different interest inventories and having students track over time. Well, when I was a freshman, I wanted to be a surgeon, and then when I was sophomore, I wanted to be a marine biologist. And now that I'm a junior, I need to really start making plans. So we want to give students tools to do that. We plan to have students develop a resume during their freshman year, which we will update with curriculars, activities that they do, achievements that they earned during high school, so that when they get to senior year and it's time to apply for scholarships and fill out applications, they've already got a reference list of all of this information handy for them. We're also very interested in bringing in guest speakers, having them do mock interviews with our students at some point, and kind of highlighting some of the careers that they may not be able to get out and do job shadowing or internships with. Some of the students are very interested in law enforcement. It's a little tricky to put a 16-year-old in a prison, and many of our students are actually interested in working as prison guards. So rather than having our students go out, have them come into the schools and talk to the students about what's actually going on. So these are just some ideas that we've got. Again, a lot of overlap. General life skill topics. Time management is a huge thing that we really need to help our students with. Goal-setting. Bluestone also touched on this, and Ms. Thomas did, etiquette of the workplace, of the classroom, just in general. We also want to bring in the registrar and have him work with our students a couple of times a year to get them registered to vote every year. This area on the screen is a little bit junior and senior-heavy. We really want to make sure that students are setting a schedule of timelines for that senior year application process and that they're adhering to those deadlines. And we want to make sure that every student, even those who may not have the resources to do this outside of school, have that support in school where we can kind of help them, and we can piggyback off of what our guidance department currently does as well. So obviously, we've done a lot of research. We've done a lot of thinking. We've done a lot of talking. We've come up with this list of topics, and we're really excited about implementing this with our students next year. We've looked at a lot of different school systems. We've looked at a lot of different programs that are out there, and we've pulled a bunch of different ideas that we're starting to set down in terms of what we will put in place for our dragons next year. And the last little piece of the grant is the workforce solutions. Very similar to what Bluestone was saying, we've reached out to local businesses and leaders. South Hill Chamber of Commerce has been pretty open about wanting to get involved with this in whatever way they can. We've also sat in on some meetings with our CTE teachers to learn about the opportunities that are currently in place for our students. Our plan, moving forward, is to broaden these opportunities. We don't want to necessarily replicate what's being done through our CTE courses. We want to get out and give new opportunities for our students. So this is kind of our plan of what we're going to be trying to do between now and hopefully the end of the school year, so we've got some really great things lined up for our kids when they come back in August. Thank you.
And lastly, just to emphasize what Bluestone spoke about, going to the Curriculum Writing Conference. Parkview and Bluestone both have individuals go into that curriculum writing, and then we'll come back and share that information. So they have the bio psych, and we have the photojournalism English component, and then we'll share those, so that if need be, if it's the will of the board, to have two courses on each side, and we have enough interest, we would do that. If we were just to have one on each side, we would do that. So we're ready for whatever our students' interests will fill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as we're having this conversation, I just want to say personally, you know, since coming in, there's been a focus of ours on the whole idea of getting away from students just learning about testing, to where they're getting ready for life. And that's what these innovation options are all about. And I'm excited because this is coming from the schools to the top, as opposed to being something that we're trying to push down, so that we don't have action tonight that would be following up on any of these, but there will be action requested of you as we move forward. And a couple of you on the innovation, not on the innovation, but on the Instructional Committee might have some comments before we close this.
There's a report attached to the Instruction Committee line item in your board docs. If you have any questions, ask Mr. Nichols.
Thank you to all of the teachers and administrators from Parkview and Bluestone. You both did a great job, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, that's the committee reports for tonight, and...
And we'll just go ahead and skip over line F, Chairman's remarks, and we'll move into public input. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public input this evening?
Not tonight.
Thank you very much. Moving into action items, can I get a motion that the School Board approves the minutes of the special school board meeting held on January 6, 2020?
So moved.
Have a motion from Mr. Allgood, a second from Mr. Campbell. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie? Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Can I get a motion that the School Board approves the minutes of the special school board meeting held on, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, January 7th? Yes, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion that we approve the minutes of the special school board meeting held on January 7th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Mrs. Garner, a second from Ms. Bailey. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Can I get a motion that the School Board approves the minutes of a regular school board meeting held on January 21st, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Ms. Bailey, a second from Mr. Ritchie. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, Ms. Garner. Letter D.
The Finance Committee met this afternoon, and we recommend paying the bills.
We have a recommendation that we pay the bills this evening. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Can I get a motion that we approve the personnel recommendations as listed?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Allgood, a second from Mr. Palmer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. We're going to skip letter F and go to letter G. Can I get a motion that the School Board supports a discipline recommendation as it pertains to student matter, SD 2019-2020-10, to place a student at Alternative Ed Learning Center for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year? Can I get...
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Ritchie, a second from Mrs. Garner. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
No. Next one. Student matter H. Can I get a motion that the School Board supports a discipline recommendation as it pertains to student matter, SD 2019-2020-11, to place a student at Alternative Ed Learning Center for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Mrs. Garner, a second from Mr. Campbell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, however, the second was from Mr. Allgood.
Close enough.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We look a lot alike.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
No. Can I get a recommendation that the School Board supports a discipline recommendation as it pertains to student matter, SD 2019-2020-12, to place a student at Alternative Ed Learning Center for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Mrs. Garner, a second from Mr. Ritchie. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
No. The next one is our policy, JHCF, our wellness policy. Can I get a motion that the School Board approves the recommendation revisions to the policy, JHCF Wellness Policy?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Mrs. Bailey, a second from Mrs. Smith. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes. Letter K. The purchase of new, purchase of property for the new middle-high school complex. Can I get a motion that the School Board authorizes the superintendent to make the necessary property purchases for the new middle-high school complex not to exceed 10,000 per acre?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Smith and Mr. Allgood. I believe that second came from you this time. I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Allgood?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
No. School Board norms. We talked about this in our work session on last Monday, which was the 10th. At that time, Mr. Edwards, who's not here this evening, recited a code out of our school law book that I believe it was, and I've called back to watch the video, and it's hard for me to really understand the numbers, but the most I got out was 22.126. And we asked, and I couldn't find the code. So we referred to our parliamentarian, Mr. Allgood, to give us an update on the verbiage or the implementation of what he said was not legal in the state of Virginia.
I couldn't find the code either, and I tell you, if you really want some boring reading, read that book. I spent a couple hours going through that. I can't find where it says that we can do it nor that we can't. It's, I don't see where it's mentioned at all about as far as censoring someone. So I recommend that we not do it at this time until we can further study and see what is legal and what is not, because I don't have a definitive answer, because I cannot find it in that book, and believe me, I read. And believe me, I've read and read.
Okay. I've sent out an email to all of the board members as well asking for that information. I will tell you that I can flirt with the VSBA attorney, Elizabeth Ewing, who is a 38-year veteran school board lawyer who knows school law like the back of her hand. And there is no such code in the state of Virginia that says you cannot censor a school board member. It does not exist. So, with that being said, our recommendations were when we do not follow the school board norms as a group, the first was a warning, the second was censoring, the third was being off of committees for six months, and the fourth was being off of committees for a year. I will tell you that in order for that to happen, it has to happen, any censoring is what I'm saying, if we were to censor a board member, it has to happen in the public, and it has to be a public vote. So, I am willing to listen to any discussion as we move forward because, again, we set these back in January and got them approved, and at this time, I believe we need to hook action on with words. So, Mr. Ritchie?
I don't have any comments.
All right. Ms. Smith?
I don't have...
Ms. Bailey?
No comment.
Mr. Allgood?
I'm opposed to doing this due to the fact that I don't think we as a group should take the authority to censor one another over our own opinions, our own input. If it's something that's illegal, that can be taken care of quite easily by the law. But if Ms. Smith has something to say that I totally oppose, I don't think that we should be able to censor her because maybe we didn't agree. I think we've seen that too much on TV here lately from Washington and other places. I'm a firm believer that everybody's entitled to their opinion. I've changed a lot since I used to be a band director. I gave everybody their own opinions when I wanted to have it. But I really think that we're going down a slippery road if we do that, and so I'm opposed to it.
All right. Mr. Campbell?
No comment.
Mr. Palmer?
I think we should hold until we get further information on it. I don't think we should jump too fast and then wind up having to go back and resent.
Okay. Ms. Garner?
I think we should take our violation number two because I'm with Mr. Allgood. We're all elected by people in our district, and we represent them. And what we say may be totally against somebody else in somebody else's district, but it's the way we feel and the way we're representing our constituents.
And again, that's a good thing while we've got, you know, a board and we all have a vote. Again, we created these. I mentioned when we talked about this back early on that this is something that I wanted to see in place four years ago when I first became a board member, but unfortunately, that never happened. But we do have the board norms now that we voted on, and at this time, we are going to vote on the disciplinary actions.
Are you calling for a vote, or can I make comments?
You can, yes, Ms. Bailey.
I just wanted to go back and public censure doesn't necessarily, I don't think that means that we're preventing them from speaking.
No.
All it is, is that it's just a formal...
Reprimand.
...letter saying that these are our norms, and this is where the board feels that you have violated those norms. So, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure, we're not limiting their speech in any way or their ability to vote or represent their district. I think it's just after the initial warning that, you know, this is a norm that we've set, and you're not adhering to that norm, then the second time they do that, then it's just a, it's just kind of a you did it again type thing before. All of this action, it won't take place from the will of one person. It would have to be a board vote...
Yes, correct.
...to do that. And so, a board majority vote.
Correct.
So, I just wanted to kind of clear up what that word "censure" actually means.
Mr. Ritchie?
That's all of it.
Okay.
One other thing, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
That's what I was saying, or thinking, everybody was saying censor, censor instead of censure. That one T makes a big difference. So...
Well, again, it is like Mrs. Bailey said, it would be a vote by the full board, and you would each have a vote to vote whether or not to censor one...
Censure.
Censure, excuse me.
Yeah.
Your school board, another official on the school board. Ms. Garner?
I...
Do you have anything else?
No.
Mr. Allgood?
I have a question. I agree with you, Ms. Bailey, to a point, but if you start taking people off of boards, off of committees, haven't you taken some of their rights away by doing this to a point? They might have a passion for finance. I don't know who would, but they might, and that would be the thing that you've taken away. And also, what about board members that didn't vote to adopt these? Everybody didn't vote to adopt these.
In this, in our setting, the majority rules. So, I mean, the majority voted to put these board norms in place.
So, some of them that did not vote for the norms still will have to follow them because we voted as a majority to make them do this?
It's, yes, it's the will of the majority of the school board.
Board acts as one.
Yeah, the board acts as one, not as individual members.
I mean...
Good luck making those, good luck enforcing those.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, Mr. Campbell.
I mean, the best example I can give you with that, Mr. Allgood, we're building a new school, aren't we?
Yeah.
And the whole board didn't vote yes.
That's true.
So, I mean, I mean, Mr. Honeycutt was dead against it. Mr. Bailey was against it. Ms. Bailey, I'm sorry. I am so sorry. But it was 5-4. Those four people that voted not to get a new school, were they at the groundbreaking?
Probably, I don't know.
And they had a smile on their face.
All right.
So, that's what I, that's the only thing I'm going to say.
Okay. And again, you know, again, I, as board chair, am holding us all, including myself, to a higher standard. We're getting ready to move into a new school. We're all going to act aimlessly to one another, and if there's an issue, I will gavel or call out, and at that point, we'll discuss it as a group, and it will be the majority vote. But again, this is what we have in place, and we're going to vote on it. Can I get a motion that we adopt the four disciplinary procedures that were put in place?
So moved.
Have a motion for Mrs. Bailey?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Campbell. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.